Let's not call to order. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I had a couple. Page nineteen. Is that kind of the, is that the two thousand something? Is that normally what the EMT course costs?
It did seem a little pricey.
Yeah.
I want to say usually it's more like twelve hundred.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I'll, I'll check with Ashley about that and see if there's something different there.
Okay.
It is south central and I feel like other ones have been Ridgewater. I'll ask.
Okay.
How about going up to the first page? You might know.
Which page are you on?
I don't know. Let me get there first. Seven.
Okay.
Liquor store credit card fees. That was kind of spendy, I thought.
Which one you, which one is that?
That's the first one.
The top one?
Yeah. Like fourteen oh five forty-seven. Do you remember why it say anything about that?
But, I feel like, that would have been, when was it? February's fees then?
High schools, huh?
High schools, yeah.
She paid at the eleventh. I don't know. I just thought it was high, but I didn't know.
It's about forty in gross sales, if that's her case.
But...
But not knowing.
That'd be everything.
Yeah. That would be as if everything was credit.
Right.
This is credit card fees.
Yeah. Well, I just did the math, putting the average percentage of the fee divided by the amount of the fee, and then it comes about forty grand. But, that's...
Okay. I don't know.
Okay. Are you going to check it out for somebody?
I guess I could have asked Carissa, but I wasn't out and about this afternoon.
No, that's okay. On fifteen, I take it that the graphics on the liquor store door, we're going to get reimbursed for that, right?
He did. It is. Has been.
And we're the only two I have.
I have no questions.
So, if we look back, it says credit card fees for November were thirteen hundred.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
It does seem low.
I don't have any questions.
Just hadn't seen from the previous years what they were sold.
Anything else?
I have no questions.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Anyone here for a public comment? That's not on the agenda? Okay. Before we get going, I just wanted to get back to something we did a year and a half ago and we kind of quit doing it. Remember, we made a point of trying to bring good things to this, like recognizing somebody that did something instead of always... So, I'm trying to say it can be a resident, it can be a staff member, it can be anybody. I know you're getting caught, otherwise you'd have came up with somebody, but I'm just saying, let's start doing that. Bringing, just saying, like I'm going to, I just got a couple. I just want to recognize Diane with this infrastructure thing. She's, she's, she's going through a lot of hair pulling stuff, so I just want to say, great job.
Thank you.
And, and the other thing I was going to bring up was, you know, recognizing someone. Saturday, I was over at that deal in Hutch and they had a big puzzle contest in our, our council member here.
Yes.
And her sister just, what they, I don't know, what was their, there must have been...
I think there was two seventy-five pieces, maybe three hundred.
But I mean, there must have been a dozen people.
Oh, yeah. A dozen teams or something.
And they all got a box.
Yep.
And they just, boom, they were just blind, you know, put it together. Well, they did it, her and her sister did it in forty-five minutes, and I mean, I looked around and everybody else was maybe half done, if that. So, we have a champion on our hands.
I can only take half the credit. Half of it has to go to my sister.
Sure.
But, yeah. Where do they do that?
Um, it was at the big little hunting and fishing expo. Yeah. Yeah.
Puzzles.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's the kind of, you know, and I caught you shorthand. So, next time, think of stuff like that.
Yeah.
All right. Unless someone has something now. How did your...
Oh, St. Patty's Day.
St. Patrick's Day.
Good.
Did you have a good turnout and things like that?
Yeah. All of them went.
I heard you had the secret barbecue recipes.
That was called out a lot on the, on the post.
Yeah. So, I guess we're calling out Roxy.
There we go.
So, okay, if nobody else has anything, let's move on to department business. First one is Public Works liaison report.
All right. I was with Chris on Friday.
Friday?
Pretty quick and short ones. Snow removal well, we got the loader repaired done. They began prepping for the pool, getting chemicals ordered and maintenance stuff. Started prepping for some outdoor projects, weather permitting, like sweeping parking lots and alley repair stuff. The citywide cleanup is set for May tenth, from eight to noon. And then there's a bid for Thomas Avenue and the packet.
So, the citywide, are we going to, going to get two dumpsters down there again?
Yep, they're ordered.
Okay.
They'll be here Friday.
Okay.
And you'll be here...
I'll be there, I guess, looks like I'll be there at seven fifty-nine.
Okay.
What do you, what else you got?
That's it on that, but, so that sewer main is the one by the bank. It goes from one house, a hundred and thirty feet down the street, so that's considered a main, our responsibility. Connects to Cleveland, but it doesn't connect to a manhole. So, there's no way to ever jet it. It's been pushed and stuffed and rebuilt over the years. We found this out when they redid the, the house sewer main out to the street main. They tried cambering it, you can only get about halfway down and it's just, it's messed up. So, I got bids on it because I don't want to tear in to Cleveland Street after Cleveland Street is done. I talked with, with Sam. We can put this in anytime before that and connect it, and they'll adjust the new manhole to hit that, because you need your sewer main in there when they come through. And I just thought we should get bids now, and, and if we can try and get it done, it is a city sewer main, only one house connected to it, but, let's always eleven grant, ten nine fifty. Jewel is, it'd be ninety-one hundred, I believe, before asphalt, and asphalt was bid by Southwest Paving, and he, he does it for both of these companies. He does their patching. So, the forty-five hundred for the street patch would be on both. So, one would be fifteen thousand and one would be thirteen thousand six hundred. So, just something to, you know, let you guys know, I've got numbers, they're not good forever. Things are moving fast all the time. I don't know how fast you guys want to take action on that.
When is Cleveland due to be worked on? It's like...
I think that one is twenty-six.
Yeah. Twenty, yeah. It's not on this one.
It's not on this schedule that I had.
And this is Thomas to Cleveland?
Yes. Halfway up Thomas. Hundred thirty feet up Thomas. And like you say, these bids could go up a grand, they could go up two grand. I can't guarantee them past this season. So, just aware that I sure would hate to dig into it, because they are going to go, I forget how many feet up Thomas from Cleveland for that intersection. So, that, that asphalt bid may be a little high, because they're going to have to dig into Thomas to complete all the connections along Cleveland. So, it's assault there, so you guys are aware of it. That pipe, I seen it, I was there when they did the repair, I was there when they did the camera. It's, it's a mess in there. If it gets clogged up, we're going to be digging sooner than later.
Regardless.
Yes. So...
So, did, I guess the only question I would have on this is, is the paving. If we would do it in conjunction with the project, we could probably save, maybe save a dollar or two with the company that's...
If the company who's paving Cleveland is willing to do stuff extra for us, you don't bill us, obviously, I, I would think that that patch could probably be done for two grand, if we do the paving part while they're paving Cleveland. Because all they're going to have to do is back up and pull up. Because they have to back up there anyway to pull that intersection. They would just have to back up a little further, because that'll only be about a, less than an eight-foot trench wide. So, that's one drop with the paver and out. And that's just, I just wanted to put it on the table, so you know, it, it needs to be done. It don't have to be done today, it don't have to be done, but it, it should be done. So, any other questions on that? I'll keep it, you know, on top of my list, so we don't forget about it and it gets swept under the rug.
Maybe we should, because I got a meeting with the blacktopping people on some other stuff. Maybe you would ask them what they would, they would, even though they're not doing Cleveland, because they're going to be doing lane, they got to put the first lift up lane and they got to do that trail.
Yep.
They got to do all the first lifts, maybe they can do it.
It ain't much to bring a paver up. I bet in that business line.
Okay.
Okay. So, as Josh said, the loader's fixed. The loader broke today. Water pump went out. So, we're down a loader, there ain't no pushing, there ain't no lifting, there ain't no nothing. So, I'll keep you posted on that. I've sourced parts. I'm going to try and get parts ordered this week. Try and pull it off in-house. So, just a little update there.
Okay.
We were looking forward to using that. I don't know how deep you guys want, if you guys got any questions on anything that was in your packet, I'm here now, or we can do it another time.
What, what were you doing on Tower in Cleveland?
Tower. By your place? So, that catch basin right out in the street, there's a pothole, and it, when it rains hard like that, it's washing out.
Oh.
So, we filled it once, but then we had that heavy rain. We filled it this morning, I got some cold patch, and we actually put a little of that cold tar in there, and I keep a bag on hand now. We're, it don't pay to do anything fancy there, because it's going to disappear, but, so at twelve bucks a bag, we can put quite a few bags in there. Yeah.
So, I was, I thought of this today, is I was just, was looking at some stuff. So, we're not doing anything with the streets that are, are part of the project, correct?
Correct.
Whether some of them, I think by next spring, they're going to have flat tires. I mean, they're bad.
I got a price today for two-inch mill and overlays on any streets, and it was a damn good price, it's two bucks a square foot, but...
I can't see that far.
It's a lot of money. I know that. I know that, but we're going to do some patching, obviously, because we'll let the weather warm up, because I tell you, that cold patch coming on that bag today was kind of hard.
Yeah. That's what I was wondering, if we should just do some spot patching.
Yeah. And I just spoke with Southwest Paving, they bought a hot box. If you guys know what they are, it's a trailer, keeps mix hot. He said we can get it anytime I want to borrow it. So, we could do hot patching, me and John. That's a little better than cold patching, but we got to line it up to where we're going to do a couple days worth to make it worth getting a...
I just meant as far as, you know, some of them that are going to be six-inch holes.
Yes. We'll, we'll get a half a pallet of cold patch and we'll backtrack that. So, if there's any other questions on any other things in that packet, or if not, I'm done.
I think they were, per the emails we've been getting back and forth, are they drawing, for some reason, for that contract to use the, for the project to use the city...
The yard?
The yard. Were they not, were they drawing up, Sam or Brody drawing up a sketch, so that way we attach it to that contract?
Yeah. Sam was sending something to, to Ken.
Okay. Right. And then we'll, we'll help you set it up accordingly.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet. I kind of got it laid out, how I think it's going to end up, but with no loader, I can't do any block moving yet, so, we'll figure it out. We'll get it done one way or another.
Well, they must be coming with something, they can move some blocks for us.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Oh, yeah. So, we had an issue with the people service for locating during this project for water. Me and Jeremy talked about it, I think Diane talked with Greg about it. Per their contract, they don't have to do a mass project locate, but I worked it with Jeremy. If me and John can't handle it, he will help us and we'll get it done. We have a locator, we have paint. I mean, short of being, you know, they tell us we got to locate thirty of them today.
So, that, that would be page thirty of your packet, item number six?
Jeremy said he doesn't have a problem with it, as long as it's not, you know, the whole day, because he has obviously a route to do also, but...
These are locating water?
I'm assuming water stops, curb stops?
What? Okay.
They've been located?
I was going to say, why are we locating them again? Because that's part of the project.
Yeah, aren't they all done, marked there?
It's not, it's not, who said we had to locate them?
So, they just, Greg just called and said, if there's a bunch of locating that needs to be done with this project, that is not a normal daily thing for Jeremy to be doing. So, if any of that would follow Jeremy.
No, no. My question is, is, have we heard anything that, from the contractor for the project is not locating these?
No.
Well, let's find that out.
Because it was, it's in the plans. They're on the plans.
I just, yeah. I just received a call from Greg.
Right. I understand. Greg is with People Services.
Yeah.
That's what I'd find out before you go and start locating. If that's part of their deal, let them do it.
Well, what's, what's a normal visit too? Is it four and a day that they would do it? So, we spread it out.
I mean, we, we pretty much know where they all are, because they're on the plans.
Yeah.
I located personally before... I located personally before, for S E H, I located probably forty of them this last summer. There shouldn't be an issue. I don't foresee an issue.
I just want to get my point across. Why are we, why is this falling onto the city? It shouldn't.
Again, we only discussed it because Greg brought it.
Greg brought it.
Understand that. But let's find out from the contract. Should be, that's either should be S E H or part of the project contractor's deal. I'm not saying we can't help people out, but let's not go rent things and get things to do it and pay these other people to do it.
Yeah, we're not, we don't need any equipment for it. We have our brand new meter and
Right.
And like Jeremy said, if it need help, if they need help finding one, it ain't a big deal. We'll find it.
Right.
We found all the hard to find ones.
Did we, okay. We don't need to do anything with that. Okay. Again, we'll help people, but don't let them dump it on you guys' shoulders.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks. Uh, public safety liaison report.
Okay, the deal is here.
There's a couple of things in the people service.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
All right, wait.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So the, under, uh, water operation and maintenance, it says.
Which page are you on?
This is page thirty-four.
Yep.
There's a, I had a question because there was talk about meters not being separate page, being read.
Oh, I, four oh four Frank?
Yep. I thought I'm seeing somewhere else or there's a few of them that weren't being read or something.
So we have a few, well, now there's two, well, one. One meter is left out there that has a wrong I D. number on it. It actually has the same I D. number as the house next to it. So we need to verify that one and he's working on that.
They got into the one that I brought where she said anytime, just give me a call? I don't want to use names, but I told you.
That might be the one that he got in. I feel like, no, because I feel like she's next to the one.
Well, she said anytime, but apparently.
We did, we did get one, but I, I feel like he's knocked on the door and she hasn't been there and they're, they're not connected.
All I said was when I set it up, when she came to me, she said, call, leave a message and she'll arrange it.
Well, he has been doing that, so, and he knocks on the door.
That it?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, now we'll go to public safety.
Okay, so for fire department, um, our report for March here, in the month of February, there were two fires in the city, eleven medicals. In Hale Township, one fire, one, uh, crash. Um, then we did receive, uh, some recommendations from the Safe and Sure walkthrough. So there's going to be a list of recommendations sent to the department. We have that. Um, and the fire chiefs and I will be meeting, will be meeting in the next couple of weeks there to talk about that and a couple of other things too. Um, so those will be addressed. We'll work through those. Um, the township annual meetings, um, they had representatives go out to hold those. They went well, presented the budgets and the operation contracts. Um, everything went well there. Silver Lake Fire will be hosting the McLeod County, uh, Fire Chiefs Association meeting on May twenty-seventh. And that'll be here in the auditorium. Um, then a couple of other things, National Night Out, uh, that will be happening in August again. We're still, we're working on planning with that. Um, Ryan Hoffman is heading that up. Um, we are hopefully going to have Lifelink join and fly in for that. So for that reason, potentially, most likely moving it down to the softball field. I did connect with the city engineers about that to see if we're going to have access.
Should be no problem.
Yes, and, um, I know they C C. you on that too. Um, but they say all things, if it goes well, Lane will have, um, the first layer of Batuminus by, I think they said July, Ju- July, I believe they said. So at least a month in advance. If everything goes according to schedule, that still leaves some wiggle room. So that'll be good and I'm excited for that event. Um, and then do you want to talk about the joint training you were talking about with the other cities?
Yes, um, Troy Chief Sher- Sherping from Winston, Chief Ton and myself met one day for lunch and we got together. We're just kind of throwing bouncing ideas off each other. And what we did, I threw it at them and they caught, caught it and said, hey, let's go with it. What we're going to do, you know, we all know it's M F P T. A. money. We get that two percent of the insurances for training. So what we want to do is train, when Winston brings in a trainer or a school, they'll, one of four of our guys will go there, Lester Prairie's four guys will go there. They'll sit in on the training. Then it's kind of like you call, train the trainer. Then they will bring that back to our department and train our guys on that, what they covered. And because you pay for thirty people every time anyway, through these schools. And like everybody says, you don't have perfect attendance every class. So well, it's going to be an extra cost.
Right.
So and if it would, it'd be maybe a hundred dollars compared to seven, eight hundred dollars savings. So that's what we're going to do. First one they, they're setting up here, it's going to be coming up, is, uh, kind of a second level of high level rescue, like grain bin rescue. We had four guys attend Winston last year. They're setting up a new one. So four guys from Silver Lake are going and they're going to attend that. And like we talked during the daytime, we're getting to the spot where we don't have the coverage during the day. So between the three towns, if we've got a grain bin rescue, we should be able to get two guys that are really trained good on high level rescue. So they can come in and be the straw bosses and help the common laborers through it. You know, we, we've got it basics, but if we get something technical, we would at least get two guys from Lester Prairie or Winston or us to be helping each other out. So I think it's, we're excited about it. We're going to be doing it and it's just something I think hopefully carries on for a few years. Be awesome.
Yeah, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
Yep.
And besides that, the guys get to know each other. Get to know each other's equipment and back and stuff. So, and, uh, one thing, I did get a, uh, call here the other day. Um, the mutual aid major facility fire that we mutual aided to Kokato. I'd like to praise our department. Um, I was there with nine other guys and they had like a sit down with kind of the four guys that spearheaded it and they critiqued it. And our department was mentioned on how well we followed orders and dug in and did everything what we were told. And that's all, that's a kudos for our department. I compliment the other guys that were there with me and they worked out good, they all worked. So it's, it's, makes me proud that I can be told that. And I think the city should be proud of it.
Oh, absolutely.
On one of the coldest days too.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a huge fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. And anything else?
Um, let's see, on the next page, we do have a report from chief three here. Um, there's a few notes on the compressor system. That's one of the things we'll be talking about at our meeting with the fire chiefs. Um, about what to do with the old system, compression system, system that was replaced recently. Um, then we have an older one that's for the air brakes, talking about that. Um, we do need approval to, um, sell the old unit if we decide to do that. Um, Dale, did you want approval on that this time or wait till next month to see what we're going to do first?
Can we get approval upon what the three chiefs decide on?
Yeah.
And you?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
But it's going to have to be sealed bid.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. You're selling city property. I know it's firemen, but it's still a city property.
Yep, yep. So we need to wait till next month for that, right?
Well, it just has to be. You can't just say, hey.
No.
John Smith, here again.
And we, if we decide what to do, we can move and advertise for bids and so on, have for the next meeting.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to advertise for bids or to approval to be able to sell it basically, right? To be able to.
Yeah.
To be able.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So, um, I move to, um, approve that we would be able to, if decided upon by that meeting with the chiefs and I, um, to advertise for bids to sell that old compressor unit.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carried.
Perfect. Um, then we also have some information about recent department trainings, um, that you have included there as well as just an informational list on the next couple of pages there about the types of trainings there are, the costs, um, just for your information. Does anyone have any questions on any of that?
Not on that, but I had a question when you went to the townships. What, uh, the agreement for the, what was it, the pay in for the?
S C B A overage? Yes, they all agreed upon it. They're going to send checks.
Were they paying in, are they paying in, their part in full or were they going to?
They were going to, after we left, they were going to discuss that. Couple of them that they, was like, uh, four hundred and some dollars a year. They were going to talk about just paying the whole thing off.
Right.
But the bigger ones that had the five thousand, they were going to wait. I'm sure it's going to be coming increments.
Okay.
Okay.
But it was discussed and addressed.
Cause that came out of?
That city township meeting we had here that night.
Yeah, but that also them funds came out of your, where did that come out?
Eight oh one.
What?
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one is?
Equipment and capital.
Right, so that gets reimbursed back in?
Yeah.
Right.
Got a quick question on the air trainings here. Are these per person or per session? These costs? In the red, one eighty, one eighty, one hundred.
Page forty-seven.
Forty-seven, yeah, forty-seven and forty-eight, I guess.
Yeah.
So it's one eighty plus materials on one of them.
I think that's per class, isn't it?
Yes.
Per class?
Yeah.
Yep.
And see what this is going to be? This is a, um, maybe it's in Mankato. I'm not, I didn't look where it is.
Um.
It's coming up this weekend or what's?
These are in Lake.
Was it Lake Crystal?
Yep, Lake Crystal.
We sent a couple of guys, one guy went for basic pump operations. That was a hundred and eighty dollars per man.
Per man, that's what he was asking.
Yes. And then we sent one to agricultural equipment, extrication, combine corn picker, whatever grinder.
Yeah.
That's a hundred and eighty, whatever they start.
Okay.
Yep. So they each one probably attended two classes.
No, that's awesome.
Yes.
Yeah, get some expertise on those.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess it's right there on the bottom.
Is it? I didn't hear that part of that.
As far as who went?
Oh, who, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, yep, yep.
Two members.
On page forty-six, yep, yep.
Okay.
Anything else on fire department?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, down to sheriff's department. Uh, we have Sheriff Jorgensen in here or Sergeant Jorgensen, I should say.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not sheriff, yes.
Nope, no.
I don't know if you guys got it printed out for the statutory last year, but.
Oh, I don't think we did.
No.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, can I make a comment? Well, sheriff's department is for a person.
Sure.
Um, Kyle knows this. I'd just like to commend the sheriff's department as far as when we have medicals during the day and that, the response time is great. It's just because we're so short handed during the day. They have sure one deputy there. A lot of times you guys beat me there. So that's great to know that we've got people there that are close. Not that when we had a P D., but back then it was a lot of times the guy lived in Glencore, Lester, Hutch. At a time they got out of bed and got dressed and got here, we were back in hollering. These guys are beating us there and they do a great job when they come.
Yeah, because I can hear their sirens before. I can hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's working out really fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Did you, did you want me to comment on this or?
Um, go ahead if you want to.
It's basically just a breakdown of the total calls for twenty-three to twenty-four. It just says that calls for service were down about nine and a half percent, it looks like, from twenty-three to twenty-four. I guess you would really have to look into, I mean, each call could take, one call might take two minutes, one call might take twenty-five hours of investigation. So it's kind of hard to tell how much time was spent, I guess, per year, but it's like they went down. I don't have really any other comments. See if you guys have questions on that. Obviously you just got the, got the handout, but.
Well, it's good to see it went down.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's not bad.
Yeah. This is helpful. Thanks for bringing this.
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, we also have our report from February on hours and the event totals. Um, the only other thing I really have is I've been in touch with Aaron Ward on, uh, National Night Out. Um, I know he has you guys on the schedule for that.
Yep.
Um, for August fifth. Um, so getting on the, on the ball with that.
Do have that written down. I didn't know, I knew it was August.
Perfect. Um, and I did also ask him about the bike rodeo and he said he was going to look into it. I don't know if you have information.
Yes, I also have that written down. So I have, there's a deputy that's going to be working on that.
Okay.
In planning stages right now. So I didn't know, but Glencore, you know, same school district, they have an officer that comes up to Lakeside here and does the presentation portion one day. And then, um, they hold the bike rodeo down in Glencore, which is the actual like event for the kids to come and go through a course. Sounds like our deputy is going to just work in conjunction. He'll probably be up at Lakeside with the officer from Glencore to do the presentation portion. And then they'll plan a separate day up here in town to do their own bike rodeo in Silver Lake here for kids that live in town and probably won't go down to Glencore.
Right.
Perfect.
So I know, I mean, we did one back in, I don't know, say twenty eighteen maybe when I was here. I don't even remember too much about it, but I know he went to the school. So it might be something that's done at the school or just the park. I'm not sure about the hours. If it's going to be during the school day or just after school.
I think the last time, remember they did it out here.
Right in the parking lot here? Yeah, I mean, that would be a good, good place if any, so.
Saturday morning?
Saturday morning, yep.
Yep.
So I think the Lions helped out with.
I was going to say.
So that's on my list is, yeah, we, we got a donation when I did it last time. So I, I was looking for, uh, contact information for the Lions or the Knights of Columbus. I don't know if like, are you the Lions?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just get in contact with you then because it sounds like Glencore is going to be reaching out for probably, uh, you know, they get a donation from their Lions Club, I believe. And there's a place to buy helmets. And there's a place to buy helmets. I think helmets are probably the best thing to buy. Pretty cheap to buy ball helmets, I guess, so thinking about doing that for a possibility.
I think last time we always gave two bikes away, too.
I'll put that on the agenda, cause we have a meeting on Thursday night.
Okay.
Perfect.
Just to let them know.
Is your email address on the, on the website, by chance? Or I can look that down and get it for you later?
When is it?
It is Aug, or the bike rodeo. I don't think we know yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm guessing it's gonna be in May. But we, there's no date set.
Okay. My name is in the book.
Okay.
Own book.
Okay.
We still have a landline. We won't go down that route.
I'll reach out to you. All right, will do. Thank you.
Awesome. Anything else that you have?
Um, no, that was.
Okay. I don't, I don't have anything else. Does anybody?
No. I guess the only thing that I know we've talked about, again, I get, I've had so many meetings with this project coming. And there's gonna be, they're gonna store a lot of their equipment down at our city shed down there. And I guess the only thing I would like to make note for your officers, keep an eye out for kids going in there and playing on the equipment.
Okay. When is that supposed to be?
Well, I don't know when they're gonna be bringing it in, but we're actually starting with the trees and stuff like that, starting next week already. So I'm guessing there won't be any really concern for you guys until probably April, first week of April, April fifteenth, somewhere in there. I'm just saying, just, just make a, make a note of patrolling it, that's all.
Yeah.
There ain't nothing you can do about it, but.
And this is for trees, or this is starting the road project?
Starting the road project.
So that's the beginning. That's where.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. I mean, it's pretty, I'm sure what's gonna be down is gonna be pretty tempting.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I could, I could see that happening for sure.
Oh, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Find one of the equipment drill bones to swamp.
You know, smaller kids climbing on there, getting hurt.
Exactly.
That too, yeah.
Yeah. Big equipment. Imagine it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah. I don't have anything else?
Thank you.
Yep, good job, you guys.
Thank you.
What's that? Smooth and painless.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, ambulance department, they had a meeting on March thirteenth. The rig will be getting back from the look-through to see if anything should need replacing in the next few years. I was taken into Sam's Tire, which is DOT certified in Glencore, so we're currently using a loaner from Jerry's Inn, Lester Prairie. So with the state aid, one of the things we had on the list was the LED light upgrades. We had some, I think it was like two or three thousand allocated from last year that we can use toward that. Estimated total cost is looking to be more like ten thousand because of the size of the rig and they have to find a special light bar. But replacing all of the lights on there except for the headlights to LED, they're guesstimating ten thousand, but they don't know yet. But they're requesting the five thousand in the down payment. And I don't believe we need approval for that since it's state aid, correct?
Well, I think we, we passed that already, allowed them to do it.
Yes, we did.
Right.
Yep. So we're good.
And the check should be out already.
I did not mail it.
No, but I've signed it, I know.
Okay, perfect.
They're waiting to, pretty okay.
Maybe we should just have a motion on that, just to cover our tracks for that down payment.
Yeah. I move to approve the down payment of five thousand dollar for the ambulance LED light upgrades.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Poles, motion carried.
They have a vendor coming in on March twenty-sixth to review the options on the stab proof vests.
Do you know where that's gonna be?
Where, you said? I believe it'll be, I assumed it'll be in the ambulance, in the ambulance hall.
Okay.
But I can, do you want me to double check on that?
Well, we were, I asked.
Oh, the Lions might wanna be there, I suppose.
Yeah, representative.
Yeah, I can, I'll ask Ashley to reach out to you maybe?
Yes.
Let you know for sure. I'll do that. Just writing that down.
I won't put it on the agenda until after that.
Yeah.
I have talked to the Lions already, but I said we won't do anything until we get more information.
Yep. Perfect. And that'll be a good time to get information or ask any questions.
Yep.
I'll ask her to get that over to you.
Perfect, thank you.
You bet. Donation requests were accepted at the annual township meetings. Rich Valley approved seven thousand nine hundred seventy-four. Hale approved twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty-one. Ashley went to those.
Is that what their request was? They approved their request?
Yep, yep. Ashley went to those meetings, said they went well, so that's good. Staffing as of February twelfth, seven EMRs with two on standby, eight EMTs with three currently on standby. One EMR is currently enrolled in a bridge course to EMT in Hutchinson, and one currently enrolled for the EMT course at South Central College. There's also an action to hire an EMR. We'll get to that in a second. Currently, we have four crews with active rotation. And the hopes are with these new hires and the people getting licensed will be able to up that to a five crew rotation, which will help ease the strain.
Still two-person crews?
Yes, yep, yep. Hopefully getting up to a five, which will be a relief for everyone. March call stats, so far, three calls. In the previous year, I wanna say these must be the calls for February. Three calls, previous year, five calls. Year to date, as of February twelfth, are thirty calls, two no transport. Compared to last year, thirty-one calls with eight no transport. So on your next page, we have the approval to hire EMR. So this individual, did he complete the paperwork, Diane?
I got stuff back today. We have scheduled this.
Okay.
I'll check in.
Okay, perfect. So just informationally, this is for an EMR hire. He may be interested in taking a class for EMT, but those also don't open until the fall. So just hiring as an EMR and maybe he would want to go for the class for EMT, to be determined. So I move to approve the higher pending background check and drug screening of Quentin Fisher.
Sure.
Do we need an effective date? Effective?
No.
You can't hire him until I have all of his paperwork in.
Okay.
He does have some things missing and I.
Okay, so we cannot.
Motion is to approve pending.
Yeah, higher pending.
Okay, so then put pending all paperwork, because there's other things missing.
Okay. So I, I move to approve the hire of Quentin Fisher, pending all paperwork received and completed as necessary. And the pending background check and drug screening also passed and completed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Question ahead on that. Now, this is a person that's probably, I have no idea who this person is, so it doesn't matter. They're, they're the person that's probably in there with someone that's the EMT and they're probably the, are we doing the driving tests and everything? So they, they're insurable by our insurance company? How, I, I have no idea. It's what I'm just saying, when they do these, if they've got a really, they may not be insurable.
Like as far as the driving record?
Right.
Do you know if with the background check, we're checking driver, driving record at all? We are?
The record, or just if they have a license?
Well, I get driving stuff back.
Okay. Well, you understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Cause this is definitely a person that would more than likely be one of them that'll be driving.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, yep.
If he's, if this person's that, okay. All right. There's no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Poles, motion carried.
Perfect. Okay, so now we get into, we have a few, a few different things here. For our options for a new billing contractor. So background, expert billing, we are looking to end our contract with them. We have notified them of that and we have not yet? We've not sent that yet? We're waiting for approval for that, okay?
Oh, so I didn't go.
Potentially, okay. So we're looking to move to someone else because of issues that we've discussed. So we have a few options, and am I correct in thinking we should not say names of the companies?
No names.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do then, we have first from page.
Well, my first question is, is we have a contract with this company?
Yes, yes.
Current contract.
Yes. So the one that is on page fifty-five to fifty-nine, that's expert billing, that's our current contract, as, in there as an example.
Okay, and then that one is, that, that contract goes for how long?
That is currently, we last signed off on it in twenty twenty?
So it's through the end of this year?
Yeah, I read somewhere twelve twenty.
Okay. Yep, but we can give them notice.
Well, no, but that's, that's the question I'm asking. Could you just, so you're following, we gotta make sure we follow the correct things, that we're just gonna give them notice, and there has to be a reason.
You can give sixty days' notice without a reason.
Without a reason, okay. All right. That's what the contract says.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So then on page sixty, we have the letter which we will send if we approve to send that, to terminate that contract. Then, starting on page sixty-one, I'm just, I'm thinking, I'll refer to these as options A, B, and C.
Sure.
So option A starts on page sixty-one and goes through seventy-eight, so that's information on that contractor. They sent that whole packet, so sixty-one to seventy-eight. They included, on page sixty-three, where they have the rates. Where it's twenty-five per claim filed, as well as an initial setup fee of five hundred fifty. And then they have a lot of detail. They also have letters of recommendation from other ambulance services on page seventy-six through seventy-eight. That they provided as well. Option B is seventy-nine through ninety. This one is a brand-new company that is, I talked to Carissa about this one. It's made up of former employees, for the most part, of expert billing, and they're forming this new company. And that one goes through page ninety. Then Diane forwarded a separate email of the third option.
What's the, what's the, on theirs, what are their, what's their billing?
Their billing is identified on page eighty-six. It's thirty-five per claim.
Wait, that's still option, that's B, right?
That's option B, yes. Option B, they also reference in the beginning of their packet that they can also do like a percentage. Amounts between like four and eight percent, where they would bill us a percentage of the revenue they collect. Instead of per claim, we would pay them a percentage of whatever revenue they collect. So let's say a hundred bucks, if it's ten percent, we would pay them ten dollars.
Right, and those are claims that they get?
Correct.
They're not just ones that are submitted?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Is that based on, let's say a claim is five hundred dollars, and it turns out that the insurance company only pays two hundred? Are they, are they taking their percentage on what we get or what they build?
What we get. Yep, yep. Option C was sent separately in a separate email. I got that one at the end of the day Friday. Option C is that separate attachment, and their rates, they provided a monthly option or a percentage option. Monthly is six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Percentage option would be eight percent. So I created myself a little table, so if we cross compare, only one of them gave a monthly option. That was option C at the six hundred sixty-six dollars. Percentage option, option A does not have a percentage option. Option B has a range of four to eight percent based on whatever we agree upon in the contract, so these are all draft contracts, just samples. Option C is eight percent. For the per claim rate, option A is twenty-five dollars. Option B is thirty-five dollars. Option C did not have a per claim rate. And what we were currently, according to our current contract with expert billing, we're doing twenty-nine per claim. So currently twenty-nine, option A, twenty-five, option B, thirty-five.
It's the only thing I'd be interested in is, let's say the, what we're paying now, the twenty-nine. What, what does that boil down to? Are we saying that's five percent? What I'm trying to get at is, is that what is the twenty-nine or the thirty-five? What are we paying right now if you actually did it with a percent?
I asked Carissa about that today, and she ran some of her numbers. She couldn't like get a super exact reading unless she went into like a ton of detail and time on it. But she took like an average amount of a claim that we get back, did like a, I think she did eight percent, and it turned out to be like forty dollars per claim.
See, that's what I thought, this would be quite a bit more.
Yeah, so the percentage, there's pros and cons. Might end up paying more, but then it's also, they're driven by however much money they get back. And we get paid, they also get paid more. So weighing it out, I feel like option A is probably the best option. And just keeping it simple, per claim. But I wanna hear what all of you guys think. I talked to Ashley and Carissa. Ashley does not feel strongly about any of them. Neither does Carissa.
So the other thing is, is if you took the six hundred and sixty-seven times twelve, that must be about seventy-five hundred dollars. Would be my guess, seventy-six. What do we pay in a year?
I was curious about that. I know monthly, I saw in our consent agenda, I think it was like four hundred something that we paid monthly last time for expert billing.
But that was three months' worth.
That was three months' worth?
Was how much?
Four hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
So significant to us.
I, I just wanna stop. We're, and I'm gonna sound negative, but we're probably getting what we're paying. We've had a lot of trouble getting, so maybe, maybe if we get more response and quicker billing and quicker receiving, will you get what you pay for?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
You know?
I will say for option A, I did talk to two local ambulance services, who are City Ambulance Services, Hector and Springfield. Who both use option A. Hector said that they were very pleased with how they'd worked with them so far. Springfield's just, theirs was pretty basic. It's like, here's who we use, they're fine. I believe Kokata uses option C, I think. And they said they're, they've been, they've been good.
Well, option C seems like it makes sense if you're getting a lot of billing, if you're doing a lot.
Well, if you're doing a lot, they're also a much larger company, like significantly, from what my impression is, like option C is much, a much larger entity than A or B.
Yeah, if you put that, I mean, we'd have to do twenty-five to thirty.
To make it worth it, yeah.
To pay off the six sixty.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yep. Chris has one suggestion when I talked to her, was that whatever we go with to do the contract only for a year, so that we can switch if it turns out it's bad. Which makes sense to me.
Well, but either that or have it in the same thing we're doing now, sixty-day notice.
Yeah, or just see what their, their notice options are, yeah.
So, did you say that Carissa and Ashley, what were their thoughts on option A?
They don't really, they don't care between, all of them really, no.
I have an issue with the second, B. If they're coming from the same company we have now and, and they're the main working force, why would they do any better?
Fair enough.
I mean.
Yep.
And charging more.
Yep, right, right.
Well, the flip side of it is, is maybe the fir, the company we're with now is not charging enough, so we're on the back burner.
Could be.
Wouldn't they need this?
We don't technically need to do anything like now, but I feel like it would be good to make the decision sooner rather than later, so we can send things to a new billing company.
Do we have any problem recouping what's in the, for the last two months or something? All of a sudden you give someone a sixty-day notice, what happens to all that stuff?
I believe we've been paid through February, I.
Really? They're caught up.
For, for, through January, through January, sorry. I know we've billed for February in February. Does that sound right? If you don't, oh, that's fine. I'm, that's, that's what I remember from what Carissa said.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, we don't wanna lose access.
Right.
Or have them not.
Pay.
Yes. So I know what Carissa would like is that there's overlap, so that we can start submitting maybe April's claims to the new company while we're still billing. While we're, we're billing through, through the end of March to expert billing.
That would make sense, cause you don't wanna lose out.
Yep, and I, I know I've heard that people have had issues with expert billing. I think that was one thing that someone mentioned to me, that they had expert moving away from. They had issues moving away from expert billing, where they would just not follow up as they should.
Or maybe even two months, you know?
Like maybe have more overlap, you're thinking?
Right.
So what I'm getting at is if we sign a contract with a new company and we want them to try to recoup what, this is the reason I'm asking, we want them to help us recoup the dead weight?
So my, my understanding is, once it's been submitted to expert billing, you cannot resubmit. So Carissa is looking for directions. She wants to know that, yep, we're gonna move away, so things are not going to be submitted to expert billing anymore.
But you wanna make sure you have enough time for whatever expert billing, billing is working on?
Yep, to come back.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, odds are that whatever's in works right now will go farther to the bottom of the pile.
Right.
If not kicked off completely, so.
But if we pass, if we decide which one we're gonna do, we still don't have a contract in front of us?
We do not, no.
So in other words?
We, we have to wait till, I mean.
We could put it on our.
Our quarterly.
Quarterly one, which is only in two weeks.
Yeah, we could do that.
We could decide which company that we'd recommend and then come back with the contract at that.
Yep, yep.
I mean, I guess, my personal view is I almost have to rely on the ambulance people and Carissa, which one they'd recommend.
Cause they work with it.
Right.
And they don't have an opinion. I asked them several times over the last few months, and they do not have a strong opinion at all, or any opinion. They told me they do not have an opinion.
Well, let's just, let's just whittle it down. The one company is a new company, that's not even, so I don't think.
I wouldn't trust that.
So it's really between.
A and C.
A and C.
And A, and C is expensive.
Well, then, that kind of answers it. But I don't think we should go with a one-year contract. That just gives them an opportunity to raise the rates.
I, I wanna say.
I mean, if we can get out of these contracts in sixty days if they're not performing.
Yeah, then there, there's no issue. Then I'm not concerned about that. I wanna say one of them said that they always do yearly, and I'm, I'm just looking through to see if it's this one. Okay, this one's a two-year contract from option A.
Okay.
Looks like. That's what I'm seeing on page eighty-six. And it says, looking for, oh, on top of, of page eighty-seven in the sample contract, it says that the customer may terminate for any reason upon sixty days' written notice.
Right.
So.
So that's a two-year contract, sixty, and we get the sixty days' notice.
Yeah. I mean, that sounds fair to me.
Well, why don't you make a motion for a recommendation?
Okay.
Based on the contract coming to the next meeting. Based on the contract coming to the next meeting.
Yep, yep. I move that we recommend to move forward with option A.
You can use the names there.
Metro billing, pending contract that we will review at the quarterly meeting next month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried.
When is the quarterly meeting?
Isn't that the truth, or?
Oh, yep, the, yep, yep, it is. I can look at my calendar.
April seventh, yeah.
Thank you.
You'd be basking in the sun.
No, not that either.
Oh, no? Thought you were going south.
No, kind of west.
Well, there's sun there, too. Anything else?
Do we need approval to terminate?
Oh, yes.
No.
Sure, should we wait?
No, 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 we haven't signed a contract with the other one yet. Then we'll be sitting here with nobody.
Oh, yep. Sure, good point. So we'll look at that quarterly, too.
Yep.
Perfect. The one other thing I had, or Diane, do you want me to hold off on this until your admin report?
Nope.
Okay. So wanted to ask your opinion as far as the hourly rates for ambulance service. So I learned something on the, the rates that we pay. Sounds like there was communication with, that Ashley and Diane worked on when they looked at the budget that I heard for the first time, which is fine. But paying EMRs and EMTs differently for on-call pay. So you can see that in your handout in the, the right column there, under EMR, EMT, for the day hourly, that's the on-call pay. And then for nights and weekends, that's the on-call pay. And then gives the runtime, extra hourly pay. So breaking that down between EMRs and EMTs, we never did talk about that at council, so I wasn't sure if we needed an official approval on that effective one-one-twenty-five, since it's a pay rate change.
But is it, was that, were those rates even brought up?
They were not. I was not aware of them until last week.
It is till the budget was prepared, though.
Well, still.
Yep. So I also wanted to get them on the, it seemed right to get everything laid out clearly on the wage schedule, too, so it's, it's there like all of the other pay rates. Unless anyone sees.
I guess the simple question I had, were these, were these even, what are they getting now and where they changed?
Diane, what were they getting?
So EMRs rates are what they're being paid right now.
But what were they paid?
Twenty-four.
I mean, did, are we, did somebody just slide this in here and not even tell us? That they changed the wage?
So Ashley, the ambulance had been discussing it, so I, I don't know why it wasn't.
It never came up on any of Ashley or I's meetings, we talked.
Well, I understand, but you understand where I'm going. You can't just change people's.
Yeah, no one got decrease in pay, correct?
Not the five and six.
So it was just increase to the EMTs and the EMRs stayed?
They added a dollar, a dollar fifty an hour to EMTs to encourage EMRs to go for that. That was the purpose behind it. I honestly thought discussion was.
My question is, I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, it's right. But my question is, is are those dollar amounts ever approved?
Nope.
The three and the five?
Three and the five, or the five and the six fifty?
Nope.
So the three and the five are what they have always been.
Three and five?
The EMR rates on there are what the rates were last year for everybody. And so starting January one of twenty-five, they were asking that EMTs get paid a dollar fifty an hour more an hour.
So they always were to five and the three-fifty, is what you're saying? Okay.
And holiday was five.
And my question is, is was this ever brought forward?
We did talk about the holiday, but nothing else, nothing else, yep. So I'm feeling like we need approval on that effective one-one-twenty-five? Or how, since it was passed as planned with the budget?
Yeah, but you can't just, you can't just, you can't just willingly raise stuff.
No, they've, they've been getting paid this since January first.
Yeah, that should have came before the council, I would think, right?
I have an issue with it.
What's, what's the?
I do, I do, too.
What's the legal way we can do this? I don't know.
Well, you.
You know, what I mean?
Which I do agree, like it makes sense, EMTs get paid more than the EMRs. It makes sense, it's just how, how it was not approved by us, yes.
I must be thinking of the holiday pay that we talked about.
Yeah, that was.
Because we raised that.
Well, I mean, I guess let's just, I think that's something we have to take up with ambulance chief, or whoever made this up, to push that through without telling us. But I don't want to penalize the people that are doing the work.
Do we need to do each rate separately?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we raise the EMT day hourly pay to six fifty effective one-one-twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I move to increase the night weekends on-call pay for EMTs to five dollars an hour, effective one-one-twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. I want this brought up.
Yes.
But the other wages stayed?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I also, we added the, for the fire department, hourly call and hourly drill meetings so that they're on the, the wage.
But that's the same as what they've been.
It's the same, it's the same as what we, just adding it on, yep. So it's, everything's in the same place of what people are getting paid. And yes, I will bring that up.
Okay.
That is all I have for public safety.
Okay. Let's keep moving here. Municipal liquor store report.
So caught up with Wyatt for a little bit. So I'll go through his stuff first and I have stuff that I'll.
So do we have his report at all?
What's that?
Is there a report in here at all?
Yeah, ninety-two, yep. Just six items here on this. I'll elaborate on those and then give other updates. So first, updates on the cameras. Still not installed, but he now has two dates for the twenty-third to the thirtieth. I asked him why he wasn't able to pick one of those dates, and he said that's what he was given, depending on the supplier. I don't know if that's, what's his name? Victor or, or Vic, that's what he goes by, Vic. Or wherever he's getting the cameras from. I don't understand why the delay is, we're going on.
Because when I talked to this guy, that's, he said I'll have him in in two weeks, and that's three weeks ago, and now this is still two more, so.
Yeah.
I think we, I'd have a hard time in the future recommending working with the guy.
Well, and I think there's some communication challenges between the two that I wanted to drill down with, with today, and that's where I.
Well, I know, but when I personally talked to the guy, he promised me he was going to have them then. And he said he had gotten his money and everything, he was just too, he was so busy, well.
Is it just his deposit check that he'd sent? Like, he's not full, paid full, right? Okay, just want to make sure of that. All right, so that's to be, you know, installed soon. Food trucks are starting, he's got the first one scheduled for April second. He wants to get one on every Wednesday this year, obviously weather depending, but he's got twenty-seven Wednesdays that he's trying to book. So he's working on that. They had an okay turnout for selling beer during the fish fry on the seventh. Little bit of a challenge in location and stuff, but he did okay with that. Did a good job with selling beverages this past weekend at the beanbag tournament. Had better sales there. And then the transition, he had a good night down at the, at the bar as well after that, so that's good. Working with the liaison, myself and lead bartender to approve overall operations, he's asked her to go through a SWOT analysis of his zones, strength, weakness, opportunities and threats, to get her feedback on some areas of opportunity in there. So they've, basically, his feedback on that is that they've increased their communication, which is very important for that facility to have, between those two especially. So that's good. I even got feedback from her as well, that she's got some ideas that she wants to talk about and stuff. So we're going to set up a meeting with the three of us. Hopefully, it was supposed to be last Friday, but hopefully be this week to talk about some of those ideas that we can implement. The last meat raffle of the season's going to be April fifth, so that was, I guess a successful season overall is what he was saying about the meat raffles.
So it's, bar was full.
Yeah, they had that. Good turnout, too. And a lot of people stayed afterward, I guess, too. So that was positive. Other things that we reviewed is the cleaning. We have two of the three bids back. The third one should be back in the next day or two. We had communication with them, the third one this morning, and just needed a couple of updates on some areas. So that should be done and addressed, so we can move forward on picking one.
Were we getting the bid from the other ones?
For which one?
Was that the one, the one that we approved back in twenty-two?
No, that's a different one. That's, that's the regular cleaning twice a year.
That's all they'll do? They won't do this part?
No.
You talked to them?
Not the commercial, he said he did. The commercial deep cleaning.
Right. But the part I'm asking, they were, in case anybody doesn't, it was passed in twenty-two that somehow fell by the wayside. Twice a year that bar's supposed to be cleaned by this company that was, granted, that was in twenty-two, and it was very reasonable, like four fifty or something?
No, it was, yeah, it was two-twenty for twice a year.
Right.
So four fifty, yeah.
Yeah. So my question is, somehow that fell through the cracks, I don't know why, but it doesn't matter. But why can't we hire them people to clean the bar, and these other ones just clean the kitchen?
Well, I think the, the commercial cleaning, I think it needs a, a big deep clean from these commercial sanitizing and pulling all the equipment out. The other company, I guess, doesn't do like the grease and the heavy stuff, so all that's going to get.
Well, I know that's, that should be, hopefully, it's only, that stuff's in the kitchen, isn't it?
Right, but those, all those, those coolers should be coming out from under the bar. All that stuff should be moved to get to, to have really, really well cleaned. He said they don't do that, so get a place. The other one's more like a general cleaning, dusting, mopping. Deeper cleaning than the everyday stuff. So this third one, hopefully it'll come back with a good number and we get it all done. So it's got to be done soon. And then the inventory audit should be done. He knows that he is behind on that. We had to clarify a couple of things this afternoon. Unfortunately, that's still not buttoned up. Considering getting a couple of tables and chairs out to the patio area and start to set that up just to give some people some space outside. The burger machine has been repaired, they just don't have it back yet. I asked him why it keeps breaking, if he can confirm that with the company. This is the second, it's been a year that it's been broken and sent out, so that's it.
So my question is, they'll more than likely take that burger machine and that stuff out of there to clean, right?
Yeah. And my other question for him on that burger machine is an example, it needs to be cleaned, it needs to be.
Clean, I guess.
Yeah, everything.
I think that sandwich machine needs to be replaced also. That's just, yeah, it's like black like this.
I wanted to follow up with the estimates to see if the equipment is part of these cleaning estimates that he's getting. Because if not, then that has to be addressed, too. Want to get the burger machine cleaned, I guess it's really bad, as well as the fryer. There's issues with that. So that's another thing that I threw back on his plate today. The freezer, as we know, that outlet's going to get swapped back out to a GFI, because that was incorrectly replaced. So I had him make sure he booked and scheduled an electrician to come back in to switch the outlet back out. And he will also have an estimate, it looks like it's going to be the same freezer to replace it if that outlet is not the correct cause still. He'll be looking to replace that freezer with the same one that we approved back last fall, which is under two thousand dollars, so it wouldn't need a.
Going guarantees, not the element.
I don't think it is either, because.
Because I plugged it in other stuff.
Yeah, other stuff, yeah. So the goal, we'll have that.
Well, didn't that guy come out and check it out, too? Somebody came out and looked at it.
Yeah, I gave, I have the estimate for the repair for twenty-two hundred dollars.
Right, so I mean, he must have looked at it, knew what it was, so it wasn't the element.
Right. Or.
Guest.
Wanted to get a two thousand dollar repair under his belt, I don't know, but otherwise, there's that. So other things that we talked about were just to clean up some of the operations, paperwork and things like that that we're focusing on as well. So that's where I have it.
So can we get this report for February emailed to us?
I think we did last time, right? I think Krista was able to, or just.
She did it. I mean, we should have, I mean, I don't know how to, I'm speaking for the council. This is very important that we get this every month.
Yeah, this is the third month without financials, if I remember right, at least on time. And that conversation came up as well, like what's, what's missing? And there's no solid answer with it, or follow up to it, so. It's a, it's a concern, it's a challenge, there's no doubt.
So has he gotten stuff over to her now to do the report for us?
Not everything, no. And I, I got to find out what, I guess, one of my parts is, I don't know what specific pieces are missing of that so I can go specifically say, this item right here is needed. Where is it, why is it not there, like, all these things are in it, deposits are done.
Right, no, but I'm, I'm not going to make light of it and beat Debbie down here, but it's two years. Geez, it shouldn't even be a question, what.
Right. From timeliness and accuracy, shouldn't be an issue by now, right?
Right, okay. All right, anything else? We'll keep moving on here. Admin report? Oh, no, community development, I skipped over you, sorry.
You can.
Sorry. It's on the same page.
Yeah. We are working on the goals, objectives, objectives and strategies. We're going to take one section a month. We worked with the public services. The ones in red are the action items that we felt needed to be an action item. I don't need, you can read that, I don't need to read it to you, blah, blah, blah. Next month, well, we won't be meeting until May. We'll do public utilities. Cannabis update. Well, we still are waiting for McLeod County to get theirs, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then we will go from there.
So you can, you can see what I did. And I took the update that Mark Talecki had provided to the McLeod County Commission, and I pulled, I, I put it into the sections of our zoning ordinance that related to where he said it would go in theirs. So if you look, you know, through those.
Likely to be on page eighty-one, section?
Yeah.
Twenty-two definitions.
Yeah, so, so page, yep, one oh one through.
Which one do we?
So page one oh one through one oh nine, that's the zoning ordinance. And the stuff in red is what I took from what Mark Talecki had said for McLeod County.
But we're still working on it.
Correct.
Nothing to be approved yet.
No, just for you to look at.
But then at that point, then we decide if we're going to adopt our own?
Yes, I'm, I'm putting those things into ours to see if that's what you want to do, or if we don't.
Right.
We technically have to go through and read all, do all three again, or do it three times again?
times again?
Yep.
When we do it?
When we get there.
Okay.
Kate?
And the same for the comprehensive plan. If you just look at the action items that we put in there in red and see if you have any other thoughts or whatever, and feel free to share your thoughts on what I entered. So that's just for you to look through, keep you up to date on what we're thinking.
Yep. Like I said, still working on it. Yep, yep. The lady or girl, I don't really know her, that wants to do a community garden on the lots across from the liquor store. She was not at the meeting again, she's been having some medical issues. So we just tabled that until she can come to our meeting, so she can explain more about what she wants to do. She did give us the order of what she wants, and she did some real heavy inside digging on it.
That was a while ago, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So she did her homework very well, but we would like to talk to her, you know?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So we're gonna just put that on hold for a little bit, until she gets better. I think that was it.
Any feedback from the gentleman that was...
No, he wasn't at the meeting. I haven't heard anymore from Kelvin.
I haven't heard anymore.
Okay, thanks. Let's move on to the admin report then.
All right, page 111 is the treasurer's report. If you have questions on that, let me know. Page...
I should say, also, you heard, we're gonna meet with Becky, the pool manager, on Thursday. We're lining that stuff up.
We just didn't know.
Okay. I thought you heard us before.
No.
Nope.
I seen that the... You ordered the lifeguard chair.
That Becky.
Yeah, I believe so, I think that's what Krista said.
Yes.
Did you order a different desk yet?
And Becky.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, because what Becky wanted, it was too big. So then we had to... They looked and got a different one, so they're working on it.
That's all.
So we'll be working with the, getting lifeguards, pool passes, and the civics did approve, donates money towards the pool passes this year again. Has Krista said anything about the iPad down there or the hotspot?
She's waiting for Becky to come in and have the conversation.
Okay.
Yep, we wanna get everything set on Thursday when she comes in.
Okay, perfect. Perfect, okay.
Okay, are we done?
I'm sorry.
We're back to admin again?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
So page 112 is a job description that I made up for the on-call office position.
It's a part-time thing, you're saying? Okay.
I think it's pretty vague. I think they should be able to do more work in there.
I think it's covered under other duties as assigned. Like, if there was need to do more, I think it would be okay for you to do it.
Yeah, where you see that?
Under general duties, performs other duties as assigned by the city clerk. That way, if there was other stuff to do that they needed help with, then I think that'd be covered.
Okay. Because that's not...
Car wash.
Yeah.
Car wash.
Oil change.
There you go.
Okay.
The only question I had was, like, under general statement of duties, do we want to... Do we... Saying assist in the city office when both city clerk and deputy clerk are out, would we ever need additional help when not both of them are out? Like, do we wanna restrict it like that, or do we wanna just say assists with, in general?
I agree with you. I think we need to say something, not when they're both out, but when...
When needed, or something, something that it's not restrictive to...
Because what happens if...
A medical...
Hopefully, nothing happens medically, but what happens, you know?
A medical leave, maybe, yeah.
Assist in the office as needed, yeah.
Well, I think it's also, yeah, I think maybe, did you have that in there so it gave you guys some direction too, so there's never a question like, why is there three in here?
Oh, sure.
You gotta look at the other side of it.
Well, you could say when they're out or as needed.
But I agree, like, we wouldn't want three people in there once.
There should never be three, but there should be two.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, where's the other one to sit?
Right.
You know, there's only two desks.
Maybe you could just change it to sits in the city office when either both the city clerk and deputy clerk are out, when either both or...
One or both.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, one or both.
Yep. I think that would cover it.
Does the title have to state part-time at all, though? Obviously, on-call, I get it.
Yeah.
But is there a required bit to list it as part-time?
So I should put on-call, part-time office help?
I don't know, I'm more rhetorical asking, like, is it a required bit?
I wouldn't have the on-call on there. I'd just have part-time office help.
But it's not regular part-time.
Yeah, I feel like that's missing of you people.
So what didn't they have it before, when Carrie was here?
I don't think we had a job description.
Yeah, you did. That's what I filled out.
Well...
And it's probably...
What I mean, what's the difference if it's part-time office help? Why does the on-call have to be in there?
I feel, I feel like if you put part-time office help needed, somebody's gonna think that I'm getting so many hours every week or something. It's a consistent thing, and this is not consistent at all.
Well, then just put, throw in, you thought it should be part-time is what you're saying, right?
Well, I didn't know if it had to be listed at all from a...
Oh, like within the job, within the job description?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, it has to be listed. Does it? I mean, it's more of a question, like, does it have to be listed as a part-time? Basically, generally, like, this isn't a benefit-eligible position, it's not consistent, there's, you know, something...
I think we do need to...
On-call is, like I said, I get it, I mean, most of us do, but you're gonna get calls like... So tell me about this position.
Well, you're gonna get calls, you're gonna see how many hours, you're gonna say, it could be a year with none.
Twice a year.
Yeah, it could be four hours one day, and it could be eight hours a day.
You don't know.
Yeah, but then it could be zero hours for a year.
It could be, exactly, right.
But the girls have been here long enough, they'll have more vacation, you know?
Or zero hours for 22 months.
Yeah, I do feel like it would be a good idea to include something in the duties and responsibilities, something to say or explain that it's on-call or part-time, not a full-time. So like, no one could read this and mistakenly think it's a full-time position.
Well, okay.
I wonder...
Otherwise, I thought it was...
Although it is classified as non-exempt, regular hourly.
Yeah, I don't have anything in there that doesn't qualify for benefits or anything either, so...
Yeah, something like that, just as a disclaimer.
Well, they will qualify for every 38 hours or something, right?
Are you the safe and sick time?
Yeah.
Oh.
They'll get 10 minutes a year.
They're never gonna work enough hours to earn that.
Well, you never know.
You never know. That's why you have to have something. And then you gotta make, you know, it's the what-if. You wanna make sure that they don't work too many hours, then they go into para. You don't want that.
Well, and I guess my question is, is are we digging into this so deep? I mean, if you've got a lifeguard, do they actually have a job description that every day they have to come in and turn the lights on? I mean, my God, we're telling these people, I gotta get the stuff out of the drop-off box. I'm saying, what if, the part-time deal like a lifeguard, do they have a job description? And if they did, would you tell them that they have to open the door?
You don't have to get...
Turn the right switch on, I mean...
No, no.
Well, I'll be honest, part of me says, yes, you do need that, to be that specific. I mean, we're...
Because if it's not written down, they're not gonna do it.
Exactly, and we're dealing with that in other areas.
Yes.
Well, but you gotta write down there, performs other duties assigned.
Absolutely, that's right, but if...
Then you have to write that down on a piece of paper, that if that person is working that they need to do this.
What I'm saying is that if it's, is there enough excuse to just have somebody show up and sit there? No, that's not the point of it, I get that, but there also isn't a list of everyday tasks that this person's gonna be responsible for.
There is not. No, there is not. The person who takes this position will not be doing our jobs. They will not be given access to our computers. They will be answering phones and helping people who come to the window.
Well, I think they could have access to the computers, because entering the water bills is pretty easy.
I've...
You know, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But then you got a training period, you got somebody trained that you're...
But this way, we can keep it...
That'd be 15 minutes.
Well...
For real.
But then you could say that perform other duties assigned by the city clerk, they can make that judgment.
Yeah.
I mean, the person that, the person that does this, to be all, to be really honest, I mean, could be an 85-year-old person that takes this, that doesn't have a job, that works, is gonna do it for 10 hours a year, and they probably have never seen a computer.
Well, that's true, too.
Yep, that's fine.
But if the person they hire would like to enter the water bills...
Then that could be assigned by the city clerk.
Right, right.
Yeah. It'd be up to them of what they need help with if they do.
And it depends on what needs to be done that day that they're there, so...
Yep. As assigned.
They may have to put 300 stamps on.
Yeah, tell me about it.
That's fun.
And vacuum the carpet, wipe down the counter. That's what I did.
Accept some...
Other duties as assigned.
Yeah, well, I guess let's just get moving on here. So we just put part-time up on top up there? Is that what you want in there?
Sure, that's fine. I think that'll cover it.
And then I had it adding it to grade 11. That's a page 112.
Is that what we have this for?
Yep.
Grade 11.
That seems fair.
So do I need council approval on that job description or not until it's complete? Do we need a motion or do we not?
What's it gonna be? You're only changing the top, aren't you?
Part-time, yep.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
Yeah, we'll need a motion once you, based on you changing it to the top.
Okay.
Put part-time in it.
So, another question real quick, now to beat that horse. Is this an advertised thing, or is this gonna be, you're looking for somebody as, like, something's coming up, I'm gonna... Are we asking around, or are we...
Probably Facebook page.
We'll post it on the website.
Post it on our website.
Put it on Facebook.
Okay, perfect, that's all I'm just curious.
Hang it up in the office, just in case people come in.
Over here.
Yep.
At the post office.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, somebody can make a motion with that part added to the top and move on.
I move to approve the position description for part-time office help, including the change we discussed with, to the job title.
To part-time?
To part-time office help.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. What else do we have?
Do we need a motion to add it to grade 11? Because it's new.
Do we need that separately?
Yeah.
It says it on the job description, though.
But we have to add it in there.
Yeah, but I just made that up, so...
Well, you were good then. Good target with the dart.
I move to approve to have it at a job grade 11.
Is there a second?
Part-time office help.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
All right, page 114 is the solar garden update, so you can see the numbers there for 23, 24, and since the beginning, 2001, what is it, 78? 17, 2017 through 24.
So we received the credit of 24 grand in these eight, in these seven years.
Yep.
And this shouldn't be going down, that's what they told us when we did it. As they get older, the machine, everything, the equipment gets older.
Yep, yep.
They were upfront about it.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, page 115 is the spring cleanup. I didn't change anything on there, other than the date, but prices I left the same. And then pages 116 through whatever they are, the McLeod County planning, so, whatever, planning commission notices that came out again. And I think the two may be very, very similar, but...
Yeah, is there any, any of these are within two miles?
Nope.
We don't have any, it's just info, we don't have any say on any of them anyway.
Just for your information.
Yeah, they're, but these both the same, huh?
I think they're very similar.
So the names are different, aren't they?
Oh, yeah, they're different, but different things.
Okay.
Anyway.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, let's go down to old business. Let's see, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna do something here. I'm gonna move...
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, let's move, I'm gonna move you up ahead here, Frank and Molly's. Let's move you guys, you guys sat here long enough.
Appreciate that.
Should've had them up before, I guess.
You gotta come up there?
Yeah, please.
I don't know if you remember, we were here a little over a year ago, and you guys approved everything, and everything was all set. We had a couple of glitches. We had to get our address changed at the county, because the state didn't like the way it was reporting on the internet, so the county changed that.
Did you actually change your address?
Well, they had it listed as our motel address. I'm actually 808 and 810. 810's the motel, 808's the cafe, but it was listed as 810 on the internet, so, and everything else was 808, so they didn't like that. But anyway, we thought we had everything figured out last month. I'm assuming, I think you guys all seen this. So this is all void now, because Diane gave us the new minutes for tonight, and Miranda here sent it to the state, and they says, "Well, it's been too long, you need to redo it."
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it was over a year. What'd they say, it timed out or something? I don't know. So anyway, what we'd like to do now is just request to have, if you guys could just do So anyway, what we'd like to do now is just request to have, uh, if you guys could just do everything over, basically give us a new.
So it's page one thirty-six, request for action.
Oh, you got it in there?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't need that.
So it's basically what you're saying, Frank, you didn't change anything. I don't, we don't care about your address, so I'm not making light of it. You didn't change anything. Everything else you're requesting is the same thing. But wasn't there something too where you can't, you can't dictate where you're gonna funnel the funds to neither, can you? Was there something they told me?
Well, they go officially, they have to do that because they're the charity.
It's, it's a matter of verbiage. So it's not that he can't, you can't dictate it, but he can make requests to us. So as our charity works, we have a donation link. And he makes donation requests on behalf of the organizations coming to him, and he provides requests to us. So there is funneling through him, so he's not dictating that the funds is made to anywhere. Um, where the, um, issue comes in is, and this is where the state found an issue. And Diane, I do find, um, your detail with the meeting minutes, I love your detail. You're the only city clerk that had so much detail. I applaud.
They don't like that.
Right.
But the state don't.
So we're doing it right this time?
You're doing it correctly.
This time?
You're, I'm just, I'm plotting that you're, you have enough detail that you actually have all the detail in there, but the state doesn't like to see all that because they can find contradiction in that according to what, um, so the lease, um, this is an actual lease agreement, the, that's a document that I provided. It's the LG two fifteen. But the other prohibition, um, prohibition is saying that he can't dictate it. And so with what she had says that he can say where the funds goes, kind of put words that he dictates where.
Yeah, we understand that.
But he, but how we do it, it's more funneling.
I'm not the charity.
Correct.
You know, so, I mean, that makes sense.
So it's kind of a difference of that distinction, but it's just the verbiage.
So realistically, is it, this, this maybe Roxy can even answer this easier than me. I'm talking, I'm not talking about you. But I'm saying, let's say there's the one in, uh, in Glencoe that, if there's, if, let's say the Lions, I'm gonna ask if the Lions were selling them and they were gonna sell them at, uh, Frank's. Really, the city's approving that you guys would sell them, not really where you sell them, is it? I mean, are we really approving her part or his part?
Her part.
Her part.
Because they are the, she's the organization, just like I'm the organization of the Lions.
Right, so really what, so what we're saying is, is we're approving you to sell.
Pull tabs.
Pull tabs in the city of Silver Lake at, but do we dictate where, that she has to sell them at her?
Would you say?
Does she, with us passing it, the only place that she can sell them, I'm, I'm not, not necessarily you, don't take it literally. She can only do them at Frank's. She can't all of a sudden start selling them. I know you wouldn't, but if we had more bars and stuff, she couldn't just start selling them there too?
Nope. Well, that's specified on there. At Molly, you know, with the address.
The only premise is that we're allowed in cities currently only at Frank's. We'd have to do it again if we went to anywhere else, wouldn't we tell?
Okay. Do you, then I guess, and I apologize, because it's been a year. Where else do you guys sell them around? Around, is there, are you in this area at all?
So we have, uh, closest proximity is Buffalo.
Okay.
And then we did have some in Minnesota. Actually do sell them, we've got a new one in Minnesota.
Okay. I just never heard of community charities in Minnesota. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Um, the west, the western part of the state, we're not too, um, we have many others, but they're more cities. We have number northern and we have more, uh, southern. We have about thirty-two.
Oh, really? Okay.
For what it's worth, I met with the guy in Buffalo. I went and I spent a couple hours with him actually, and he kinda showed me his whole operation and told me the kind of money and the different things he was doing for, uh, he told me one thing about he was having like a fish fry or they had it figured out where all the proceeds then would go to the school. I mean, uh, he's got, it's a pretty slick deal.
Okay.
So what, what number is the LG? Is it fifteen or fourteen?
Fifteen.
You'll have to change that because it says fourteen on here.
So the.
That's what everything that house does.
Yep, so the, there's two, the lease is the fifteen, but the fourteen is the premise permit, so the, what she has is correct.
Okay, okay.
The fifteen was just an example that.
Okay.
Of the verbiage, because it was only an example. So Diane has correct. She's, she's got the details.
Been years since I've had to do that.
Right.
I don't go and look at the.
So my question is, have you seen the council action?
Yes, I believe.
Is that gonna suffice for what you need?
Oh, I'm gonna give whoever's making this motion the wording that they're gonna use.
Is it what's on here?
Because I have no.
No, well, it's close.
She's got some verbatim.
But we are gonna get it right.
Should be on the council action, shouldn't it?
It is, it's very, it's very close, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, so I don't think the council is, in general, has any issue with this, because we passed this once already. All right? Uh, who's gonna do the motion? I guess you are.
I guess Joanna's gonna do it.
Okay. I move to approve the LG two one four premises permit application for community charities of Minnesota to conduct lawful gambling at Molly's Cafe located at eight hundred eight highway seven in Silver Lake, Minnesota.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Aye. Oppose, motion carry. Good luck.
There you go.
Hopefully this works, right?
Thank you.
Won't see back in here.
Not for Frank's.
Alright.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let's jump back to the fee schedule.
Oh, yeah.
And give her my.
Sure.
So has anybody?
Twenty-three.
Yeah. Looked into it? Have any thoughts on it?
Well.
Well, page one thirty-four, I was reading through that and then I was surprised at some of the things that were included. So this is very helpful to have.
What page?
Uh, the, uh, one thirty-four, the list of the projects that require a permit.
No, you're not talking the fee schedule, you're talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Fee schedule, I'll go back up.
Well, I did talk to a neighboring town as of today and they haven't passed it yet.
No.
They want them to come in and talk about it.
But I think this company is gonna be sold again. Did you hear that?
No.
Oh.
They can't hardly get bigger national, I hear that.
Maybe because their fees are high?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. My personal, I don't think we should raise it. Just my thought.
I agree. I hate the idea of having to, or the idea of raising it period. I mean, especially considering costs. I think it's a, in a way, my, my first thought, and when you look at it, is it's almost a deterrent for some things.
Oh, yeah.
And when you look at the permitting for construction, and you can speak more to this Bruce than anybody probably, is, that's a big chunk of here.
You mean for like building a home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, a home in Silver Lake, let's put it that way.
Right, right. Not Minnetoka.
Right.
Well, I mean, I don't know if it's, I, I wouldn't say, they still have to use a fee schedule. So when they use a fee schedule, uh, what you're saying is not like Minnetoka, well, Minnetoka's probably building seven hundred and fifty thousand of their homes.
Sure.
But it's still used the same multiplier. When they pick up a fee schedule, if they adopt a fee schedule, they have to use that multiplier.
Okay.
But the deal they're doing is, is they're using the ninety-seven plus ten percent.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm kinda torn between the two of them, to be honest with you, because I'm around this, but when you look at like the, like the smaller ones, you know, like, I don't like how they're gonna charge more, you know, for ninety-five dollars an hour for these inspections, and I've never seen that from any, any city, to be honest with you. You know, if you're looking at page one twenty-seven and that, where they're going from sixty-five to ninety-five other inspection fees, uh.
Right, I agree with that.
Because, I mean, I'll be really frank. I personally got a letter, I think Diane, you probably sent it out, when a tree fell on my house and they got a, they got a roofing permit. No problem. Talked to him, Travis is his name. He had sent everything over. I got, I got a letter saying that they never filed their permit.
We did too.
I go on the county, go on the county deal, and I, I went in there and I looked at the permits, because you can look at all permits, like I got them for the house over here in one oh eight. There's listed, there's mine listed. Roofing, blah, 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 closed. And I call them and I talked to them today, and I'm just, just saying, this is an example. I'm not saying it's any different, anybody. Like, well, we, we don't think we got any, we didn't get the pictures for the roof. And, uh, I talked to him and he said, "I sent them." And I asked the lady, I said, "Then why does it say closed?" If you, I said, "Who closes these?" Well, well, that was what I got for an answer. The county isn't gonna, you know, they get the stuff on, online, you know, they get it that it's closed. And you can go on and look if any permits are on your house. You can see if there's any outstanding permits. And mine showed closed. So anyway, the nice thing was he had the pictures and he's gonna send them, and I'm just sitting there thinking, what's going on back here?
How did they get to that point?
That's what they said to us too.
Oh, yeah?
We received the pictures. Yes, you received them.
Well, matter of fact, even, I'm, I'm surprised that, uh, she goes, "Well, maybe he sent them to the wrong email address." He sent them the same day that he sent them when they did the little buildings in town here last summer. They roofed the one behind the fire hall on that, he sent the pictures the same day. So I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying for what the, just a little frustrated, I guess, on, and you got the same thing.
Mm-hmm. And how many other people got it that we don't know about?
Right. So, anyway, I mean.
You just got one?
Last summer.
Oh.
Yeah, I just got this one and she goes, "Well, I don't know what happened." So anyway, I mean, when you look at it, if somebody's gonna re-side your, re-side your building, when you really think about it, they're gonna come and do an, if they're gonna come and do an inspection, a permit for that for seventy-five bucks isn't bad.
No.
You know? But, but a re-roof, they want seventy-five dollars, all they, they do is they want pictures from the roofer.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's excessive.
Yeah, what do they?
So, I mean, I, when I, when you look at them and say, "Well, do you, uh, should they all be raised?" No, but I could, I could justify some of them. But like we talked about the, and then, again, jumping around, going back to what you said, Joanna, when you look at what you need them for.
Yeah, I was surprised by some of that, like.
And some of it's.
Some of it makes sense, but, um, like, I don't know, installing a bath fan, I would not have thought that I needed a permit for that.
Well, a dryer.
Well, a bath fan, you'd have ventilation, you need electric too.
I suppose, I suppose, yeah. Because this is all, all, only new things, right? It's not a replacement.
You will need a permit where if you look at it and if you're gonna install a water tower.
I saw that.
Next time I do that, yep.
But here's, here's to your point. Dishwasher.
Yeah.
Seriously?
New or replacement.
Yeah.
So is that really like?
Like a replacement, your dish.
You know.
Like you, you, you wheel one out, you wheel the other one back in.
And you hook it back up, right?
Like that's saying you have a permit?
If you're getting, is this new construction dryer install or a new dryer?
Right, but, yeah.
We're plugging and playing here.
A closet?
But then if you look over here.
If you're making a bedroom, I don't know.
I guess.
Yeah.
Stairs. I put a sign. What kind of a sign?
Well, you'd need a sign. There should, there must have been a permit. If you put a sign up, like we did on the highway, they had a permit.
That makes sense.
Yeah, range hood.
Right, yeah. You gotta put the right size in.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you do. Write CFM. But. Yeah.
Temporary structure not part of a television motion picture theater set?
You don't need a permit for that.
For, for what?
An oil derrick.
Nope.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't see cemetery.
A sink.
What does a temporary structure not part of a television motion, motion picture or theater set even mean?
Which are you in the ones that are required?
Uh, yeah, on page one thirty-four, what does that even mean? Under temporary, on the right-hand column, temporary structure not part of a television motion picture or theater set?
What else would it be, right?
What is it?
Well, I mean, I guess the good thing about this page is if somebody calls up, a lot of this is not dictated by them.
True.
A lot of that is dictated by the plumbing, as, as an example, the plumbing code.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
So anyway, getting back to, do we wanna raise it or not raise it? I did, I did check in a neighboring city and what they're asking us to raise them is identical.
And what are they holding off for so far? You said they haven't raised it yet?
They, they were struggling with it, whether they wanted to do it or not, and they're gonna have the people come and talk to them.
Yeah, because I guess he just called on the phone.
Yeah, he's coming up now.
I don't think we should raise it.
I can see, I can see raising some of them, but not, not others, like if it's.
Well, it can be cherry picked. Or isn't it all, can we do it à la carte?
Um, that's a good question.
I didn't mean that, I know you got, I know what you're gonna do.
No, no, that makes sense. Um, like.
Well, I mean, they cherry picked it when they went and they raised some twenty-five and some five.
True. I feel like we should be able to, because didn't they also say that, um, the reason they're raising it is because we have a certain portion that they're paid and that's pretty consistent, but then also enough, like above that, but are, like, what's dictating that we need to raise it besides them asking us to? Like, is there a certain quota we need to reach?
No, they're trying, if I can interject, they're saying that they haven't raised it in so long and they're saying, "Well, if it's raised, how much do we get from the city?" Let's just use an example of these little seventy, or fifty-dollar roofing deals. Does the city get anything off of those, those, those over-the-counter ones?
Well.
Yeah, like my fence.
I mean.
What am I gonna do?
I mean, do they take, do they take forty and we get ten, or do we get, not get anything, or?
I, I, I can't answer that.
That's a good question.
I don't know.
Like, what's, what's the net?
I don't know what the, I'll have to look.
So do we have any over-the-counter permits?
I do not do over-the-counter permits because it all gets entered into their community core program and we started to do it and it just is so much easier to just shoot it to them and they have it entered in five minutes because they look up the contractors and they know everything that has to be put in there.
My question I'm saying is, is we used to have over-the-counter ones where they'd come in and pay X, these simple ones. Did the city keep that money or did it go to them? That's, that's a simple question I'm asking. What I'm trying to get at is, if we're trying to justify raising.
I do believe that, that, that is ours, those, yep.
So what you're saying is, is, again, I'm just picking re-roof only from fifty to seventy-five. They're not getting anything on that?
Again, I have to look to be sure. I'm not.
Because you just said that, that was ours.
I do think that that's the city money, but I'm not positive.
Well, then where are they getting their money if we keep the money?
And why are they doing inspections for nothing?
Yeah.
Well, that's exactly what I was. I think is where my question was gonna go is, are they?
So, so can I ask someone, over-the-counter like that, were inspections never done on that stuff or, or what? I, I don't know how that works.
I don't know. How did you do it when you said you shifted it over to them?
So they inspect as far as I?
They don't inspect. You send them pictures. That's what we did. Isn't that what you did too?
They did, but apparently they, I didn't do it. Travis did it.
Well, whoever.
Right.
So I'll use myself as an example. You know, I have to get a permit for my fence.
Yeah, if it's over seven feet.
Right. No, I still, yeah. If it's over that, it's different.
Yes, right.
It's a different, it has to have a whatever process, but mine's not, alright, so right now it's fifty bucks.
Yep.
What do, and I have to get a permit, but do they come and do anything for that, or do I just put it up? I gotta call the eight-one-one and, you know, zap yourself and all that. All that's done. What does this company do for that fifty dollars?
You take pictures and you send the pictures to them.
And then.
That's it.
It goes into a database that the city office would have access to.
Right, Bruce, then they close it, the building permit.
After it's done, yeah. Well, see, the deal is, is let's say you sent it in for a fence that's under seven feet and you turn around, you made it seven foot four. They have, they have the authority to make you tear it down.
Sure. If there's a reason that got them to that point.
But that looks like it's seven foot four though.
I'm just saying, in the picture, there's no, they're not coming out for it.
I'm not saying I'm going to. I have no interest in some fence, but I'm just using it as an example, like, if they're not coming to do anything and we're, we're raising a rate, and I'm only using the fenceman as an example, because there's probably a bunch of them who can talk about these things, but about, to say, "We're gonna store your pictures in our cloud for fifty bucks." I get there should be a permit. I get there's certain things that require permits, some of them we have just talked about don't, or these are weird. But for what, if we're gonna raise it and they're still not doing anything for that service, or doing a service for that fee, and yet they wanna raise the fee again, those are the things that I say is like, that's a deterrent from doing something or, or having somebody do something worse and, you know, not get anything.
I, I will look closer at inspect building fees and what we're paying them and, and I'll look at that.
Maybe I'm nitpicking it too much, I don't know.
I can, I can put this back on the quarterly.
Wallet protective, I guess.
Well, we all, we all are.
But it's for everybody too.
Right, yeah.
Trying to encourage people to dress up and do the things they need to around their house, but not, you know, feel like they're getting nickel and dimes or a permit off them too, I guess. I don't feel that I want them to.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's a tough one, because I mean, especially the thing, they don't do anything for a fence then, it's like...
What do they do for a dryer?
Right.
Or range hood?
Well, what I'm saying, in your case, with a fence, you gotta make sure you do a lot line, did we change that? If you're gonna put it on the line, you gotta have a survey.
No, you gotta have approval from your...
We changed that.
Landowner, wasn't it?
Oh, a couple, at least a couple years ago.
Oh, I gotta get the new one, because that was last year, it was...
Well, it's not right.
That's all right, I'm not, I'm not, I won't be on the line, as far as my, my example.
Right, because that was where they said they got approval, and then all of a sudden they were over the lot line, and then it turned into a big rule. Okay? Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think...
So, okay, finish, I'll bring this up later.
Are you still about this?
You wanna build my fence, is that what you're gonna say? Okay, well, let's...
I haven't used a hammer for ten years.
I got it.
Okay, so we're gonna, you're gonna look it up and bring it on the quarter?
I will, yep, I'll get more information on that.
We don't need a motion on that, do we?
No. Again, Molly's done, okay, so then let's go down to, nothing else on this, right?
Well, I was just, who does the blight in town?
Public Works.
Some of these...
Are you looking at this? No, I mean...
You talking about on the B schedule?
No, I'm just asking.
Oh.
Some, some, some places are kinda junky.
Yeah, that's a tough one though. Okay, let's go down to the new business resolution twenty-five dash twelve, approving property liability insurance premiums. Hey, what is all this one, Diane? Got this?
So the property liability premium is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-one, the amount budgeted was thirty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-five, so...
So my question on this is, how do they come up with, um, this is, this is the li, this is liability insurance?
Property and liability.
So it is property too, so how are they coming up with the value to properties?
Yeah, they sent me a sheet, and I have, Dale did go through some of, well, he went through automobile stuff for fire department, and he updated some of that, but the property values of the...
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, they'll insure some of this stuff up through the roof if, if we don't keep a handle on it. I mean, this is fine, but I think in the future, we should see how they're doing it. Sometimes you should, some, you should look at what your home insurance, the value, what they get on it, they go crazy, you don't even know it.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
That's why I'm...
Not the cost, I'm talking about there, you're saying this is what your home is val, yeah, try it, yeah. Okay, all right, well, at least it's under budget? No, it's over, no, it's under.
Oh, it's under.
Under, yeah, well, by a thousand dollars. Is that a, is that a solid number, or can that change?
Nope, that's solid.
Solid number, great, okay, we need a motion there.
And that's all property, all buildings and all that stuff, I'm assuming?
Somebody have a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty-five dash twelve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
I pose, motion carried, so this is liability too, if somebody falls down and breaks a leg. So how is that, how, this is getting back to a simple question, if you talk, how is that when people wanted to rent that ballpark? That's liability. And I thought we were gonna find out what's covered and what's not covered, and what do they have to sign if they're going to? That's part of this, isn't it? These people would tell us, right? I mean, I, I don't think we need a lawyer to tell us, but these people should tell us. I thought we were gonna do that.
I had a similar question.
There was somebody else, well, she's had a couple inquiries in the last year.
Something similar to that too, um, for National Night Out, um, Ryan had wanted to have a, a bounce house, but it sounds like he talked to Dean, was the name I heard, and they said, we can't, because of liability reasons. Which is unfortunate.
He did not say you cannot have one, what he was told is that the one that you get has to run it. They have to have the liability.
And they have to have, you have to have a copy of their insurance.
Yep.
Okay.
Do not get the guy from Watertown.
No.
Why is that?
He doesn't have insurance.
Okay, so if you get a, if you get someone to do it, then...
You have to ask for their insurance.
Okay, and I think the option he was looking at was where he would like pick it up from someone who had one and do it himself, okay, okay. That makes sense then.
Add it, like do a temporary time limit rider on your policy for...
Well, that makes sense then, actually, yeah.
So I was looking at your deal for your National Night Out?
Mm-hmm.
You could try to do it down by the Lions Park, you said?
Yep, yep, down the softball field, so the helicopter... Not, oh, not the corner one, sorry, the recreation area down there.
Yeah, it's not Lions Park.
Thank you, yes.
I thought you were gonna do it down there.
Oh, nope, nope, nope.
Didn't catch that one.
Nope, softball field, that area, yep.
Okay.
Good correction, thank you. Um, but it'll be exciting to have the helicopter.
Yeah.
As long as they don't have calls, but, um, yeah, I'm excited for that.
Okay, we're gonna give rides?
Yeah. Ooh, I don't know about the liability form for that.
Yeah, okay, anything else on, you may have anything for open discussion?
Um, only update I have for playground at this point, um, is the tree on the corner that we thought was gonna have to be taken down, I, um, connected with Sam and Brody, and turns out we don't actually have to remove it, so the park is keeping all its trees, which is a good thing. Um, we were looking at using it for like the natural part of the playground, but we'll find a different tree pretty easy. Not really concerned about that, um, and it's good we get to keep the tree. So still working on planning that out, and we're working on getting a like drawing diagram of what the plan will look like. And then we can look at it.
I guess I could give a quick update.
Yeah.
We need to have the meeting, so they're, as you've seen, they're marking everything, if anybody's driven around, you've seen all the, uh, right of ways, a lot of them are parked, are marked now, I had people visiting me, if, if anybody talks you down, not to get excited, because the right of ways are marked, like way up on...
Yeah.
That is not anywhere near where this stuff is going. But that's the right of way. And they're gonna be starting next week, Excel's coming in, they're starting to move, move things, and, uh, what is next week, the twenty-fourth? I got this all at home, and, and they're starting, uh, bro, they're gonna start right around May, or April one, I think, they're moving in.
Awesome.
R and R.
Good.
So, yeah.
That's pretty good.
So they're gonna, but you're looking at something different than what I'm saying? Oh.
And they're starting by the pool, right?
They're gonna, that's the street, and then they're gonna take, well, that's good, so then I asked them, in case people, you should have this, in case people ask you. Frank Street, the plan is to take that heading east up to Oliver, right up on Top of that Hill, that's the goal for this year.
Frank Street up to Oliver?
Yeah.
From Lane to Oliver?
Well, you're, after like Olive Lane though.
Right, now we're on Frank.
Okay.
We get up to Oliver, now Center Street is the one down below it. That one is gonna get up and stop at the park.
Okay.
But to be honest with you, I don't know, no, that one is going to park, not to do park, to park.
All the way, okay, okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, they're going to park.
Yep.
And then they are going to, obviously, then they're, they're probably gonna jump down on, uh, what's, is, what's that loop down there? The one we had, you know, the loop around by Limon Hands and that, what's that street?
East Street.
East, is that what it's called? That loop, the one that we went through so many easements?
Uh, no, uh, Frank and Center, Frank.
Continues, it jumps across, uh, Lake and continues on the other side of Grove Street.
East.
East, okay, she's saying it's east, I'll believe her. That one, and then down at the school.
Okay.
And they're gonna have the one on, when you're talking about it, by July, that'll be, have a first lift on the road, and, uh, the trail will be paved.
Nice.
And that's that goal, and then these other ones will have their, all their work, their first lift, you know, you know what I'm talking about, that'll all be done before winter. Now, if it rains for two months straight, who knows what could happen?
Yeah.
Could happen.
Yeah, you never know.
But they're, they wanna get at it and go fast.
Good, good.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll be able to open the pool on time.
It should be closed, they said four weeks.
Yeah.
Well, it's usually beginning of June, right, for the pool?
Yeah, usually it's after Memorial Day. So, anyway, that's kind of a, I'll, I'll keep bringing that as a, some feedback. Any, anything else, any other questions on that?
Any chance we could get that in writing, actually?
What?
For, for reference for that, or I'll actually make notes while I remember.
What do you want in writing?
Where they're going. I'll, I'll write it down, I'm gonna write it down.
Call the city attorney.
Yeah, there we go.
They're going up, they're going, the, the plan is, on Frank, they're gonna go to, stop at Oliver.
Yep.
And Center Street is stopping at Park.
Yep.
Perfect.
And then the loop.
Then they're leaving.
I have the plan, Joanna.
Yeah.
I can always call you back if you have any questions.
But they can deviate from that anytime they want.
Yeah, that's just...
As long as they complete the stuff, they start.
Yep.
And they may wanna take and do the, the grinding all a bit quicker, can't blame them for that, when they bring the machines in. But the trees should be starting, that might be starting next week.
Aren't they putting fences around?
I thought he said next week or something.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of them with the R on, somebody sprayed R on them to remove, they've been going around doing that, but they're coming in, they're taking the whole works right away for the whole project. And last thing, we've been in some discussions with the county on east part of Main Street. The one, you know, remember they brought it up that night? So that's just kinda very preliminary.